Members of the audience shall not engage in disorderly or boisterous conduct, including the utterance of loud, threatening, or abusive language, clapping, whistling, stamping of feet, or other acts which disturb, disrupt, impede, or otherwise render the orderly conduct of the city meeting infeasible. A member of the audience engaging in any such conduct shall, at the discretion of the presiding officer or a majority of the city council, be subject to ejection from the meeting per Government Code Section 54954.3C. Removal from the council chambers. Any person who commits the following acts in respect to a meeting of the cities shall be removed from the council chambers per Government Code Section 54954.3C. A disorderly, contemptuous, or insolent behavior towards the city council or any member thereof, tending to interrupt the due and orderly course of said meeting; a breach of peace, boisterous conduct, or violent disturbance, tending to interrupt the due and orderly course of said meeting; disobedience of any lawful order from the mayor, which shall include an order to be seated or to refrain from addressing the city council; and any other unlawful interference with the due and orderly course of said meeting. All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the TAF City Council Successor Agency Joint Regularly Scheduled Meeting for Tuesday, April 19, 2022. City of TAF council meetings are being held in person with full capacity seating and are livestreamed at www.youtube.com/ user/cityoftaf. Public comments can be made in person and also can be received per the following. Written comments may be dropped off in the drop box in front of City Hall. Comments may be emailed to thecityclerk@ymafield@cityoftaf.org, or made by phone to the city clerk's office at 661-763-1222. Public comments will be accepted up until 5:00 PM the day of the meeting, and all comments received will be read into the record. We're going to begin this evening's regularly scheduled meeting with a pledge of allegiance led by myself, but by an invocation from Stephen McDaniel. If you'll join me, please.
Salute and pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, we thank you today for all that you have done. We thank you for your blessings upon our city. We thank you, God, for health and for life and for all that you've done for us. We pray in this hour that you would guide this council, guide our conversations, and, Lord, let us produce your will and your purpose and your design for our lives, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much, Stephen. Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Mayor Nor.
Here.
Mayor Protem Crier.
Here.
Councilmember Evland.
Here.
Councilmember Whiting.
Here.
And Councilmember Bryant is absent with notice.
All right. Thank you very much. First item on this evening's agenda is the draft 2022 RTP presentation by Ben Raymond, the Regional Transportation Planner from KernCog. So, Ben, welcome. Introduce yourself, and we're ready to hear from you.
Thank you. As said, my name is Ben Raymond. I'm the regional planner at KernCog. We all work for you. I'm an extension for you. As one of our member agencies, one of the 11 cities in Kern County, Mr. Crier is on our board, and we also have a couple members from the county and one elected official from each of the cities. Today, I'm going to be talking about our regional transportation plan, the 2022 RTP. This is a document that comes out every four years. It's a long-range transportation plan, looking out 26 years into the future of what the region may need for its transportation system. We provided you a little brochure on the regional transportation plan. It provides a basic summary of what the transportation plan is and some of the work that goes into it. In addition to Mr. Crier being on our board, we also work with city staffers. We work with Craig Jones and Mark Staples. They are on our, two of our advisory committees. We have the Transportation Technical Advisory Committee that Craig Jones is on, and staff from other cities, usually in the public works departments, serve on that advisory committee. And then we have the Planning Advisory Committee that Mr. Staples is on. And both of those inform the decisions and a lot of the work that goes into our transportation plan as we develop it. It's a continued process that happens every four years. As I said, we begin the process for the next one, but it just continues on. We're constantly doing outreach. This round, we reached out to over 7,500 of Kern's residents and got input through public workshops and public events such as Old Dorado. We had a booth out there where we collected input from folks in TAF. And the primary purpose of the document is to make sure that we get the dollars and funds that Kern is due for planning the transportation projects that connect the region and connect all the cities and communities within Kern. In the handout, we've also included a table. Now, online, people can access this brochure and the table, and the website's listed here. It's www.kerncog.org/2022-rtp. And the table, we've summarized it for you guys to just have the TAF region and your projects, but the full table's online that has all the projects that are in the Kern RTP. And what we'd like from you tonight, we'd like to request that you take some time to look through this table and see if you have any questions or comments about any of the projects, whether it be a project that's maybe not on the list that you expect to see there, or maybe a description doesn't really match what you would think this description should be for a project, anything like that. This RTP is going out for public review this Friday. It's a 55-day public review, and we'd like to get as much feedback from you guys as possible. So, this is a kind of first notice before it goes out for public review. And then the EIR will also be going out, and they will both be going to the board in July for adoption. So, and that's another chance that Mr. Crier will have to see it one more time for adoption. So, with that, I'd like to take any questions or comments?
All right. I'll start. Explain to us, if you would, for the people behind that camera, where is the funding for all this? What's the funding mechanism? Where's the money come from?
Well, a big portion of it is through the gas taxes, which we do have a section in the handout about the gas tax. Trying to locate it, just one second. Here we go. So, this section here talks about the gas tax, and you could see here that 25% of the price at the pump goes to the taxes, and a lot of that funding funnels through both the feds and the state, and we get a portion of that funding for planning these projects. And we've got to make sure that we get all the work into this document to be able to use those funds and get those projects delivered.
Okay. So, the people paying for all of this are the people who are buying gas and are buying diesel. After all, they're imparting the wear and tear on the road surface, and they're depending on it, so they should pay for it, right?
That's correct.
All right. I have another question for you. The state of California right now registered 700,000-plus EVs, plug-in EVs. Those people also use the roads. They don't buy gas. They don't buy diesel. They impart wear and tear on the infrastructure, but they don't help us fund it. So, how long is their holiday from their responsibilities going to last before they finally start paying their fair share? When's that going to happen?
That's a good question. SP1 did implement an additional DMV fee for electric vehicles to help get a fair contribution, but it's not nearly enough. The state of California is working on looking at other means. One is a VMT fee, so it would be an odometer-based tax based on the amount of mileage driven, and they are working on a number of pilot projects to determine the best way to implement that.
Would that be for people with EVs, or are they going to do that to all of us, even if we're driving an ICE vehicle on top of it?
They're looking at multiple avenues of how to implement it, and I don't think they've decided quite yet which way, but they are doing, with their pilots, they're looking at all aspects. So, for the pilot projects, I know they are trying it out on all ICE and electric vehicles.
Did you guys talk about that, KernCog? I'm curious. I mean, we know the funding mechanism is being lost. I mean, they're getting a break on everything. On top of that, they don't pay sales tax because they don't buy gas and diesel, so they don't help fund municipal government. So, they expect that if they get in a wreck, that emergency vehicles will show up, and they'll be taken care of, because after all, this is America. But they don't help pay for that either.
Yes. It's a big concern. I mean, if things go the way the governor wants things to go, and they only sell EVs in the future, how are we going to maintain the roads?
That's an interesting-
So, we're very concerned about that.
Yeah. That's an interesting concept, and I'll let the other guys talk about it, but I think the governor said by 2035, isn't it, by 2035, only battery-powered vehicles can be sold here in the state of California?
Sure.
That is correct, right? 2035. Are you familiar with the EIA, the Federal EIA, Energy Information Agency? You familiar with them?
Yes.
They do a report every year. In 2022, they issued their report. Now, the governor says that by 2035, we're only going to sell battery-powered vehicles in the state of California. Well, the EIA just issued their 2022 report, and in it, they recognize the fact that in the United States, right now, 92% of all the light vehicles sold in the United States are internal combustion engine vehicles. But by 2050, there's going to be a big change, and by 2050, that ratio is going to drop from 92% all the way down to 79% are still going to be internal combustion engine vehicles. Not 2035, but by 2050, 79% are still going to be internal combustion engine vehicles. So, it would appear that the information that they use to compile this very important report doesn't recognize the fantasy that we do in the state of California. So, I didn't know if you all talked about that. So, I don't want to beleaguer that point, or the fact that there's force majeure for cobalt coming out of the Congo, so they're not loading it, or the fact that battery-grade nickel was removed from the London Metal Exchange because it went up 90% in a day. All of those things are going to get in the way of Peter Pan and Tinkerbell getting their battery-powered car by 2035. But anyway, I just want to bring that up. So, gentlemen, any other questions?
Quick question, just to follow up on, so if the VMT is, if the taxes instituted across the board, say, that would automatically mean that those driving the internal combustion engines, that would be an exclusion of them, right? Because they're already paying those taxes. Or, and I know you said, well, they're looking at a variety of things, but I mean, common sense would tell you that that would mean that the gas tax would go away then, right? I mean, doesn't that make sense, that it would go away?
Is common sense a part of that committee? I don't think they were invited.
I'm not trying to be overly facetious here, but ideally, it would make no sense.
They're looking at ways that, you know, if you're paying the VMT tax, you're not going to also pay the gas tax, so it would offset the gas tax that you're paying. But how they're going to implement that is still yet to be seen, and I'm not fully up to date on everything that that committee's been doing.
I guess part of this discussion is the recognition that what you do is critical. It's critical to every community in the state of California. I mean, our infrastructure, that's what moves us around, and it needs to be taken care of. Obviously, right now, I think the state of California is rated 48th out of the 50 United States as far as the condition of our infrastructure, so we've got a long way to go. But recognizing the fact that we're building a problem, a shortcoming into the financing of the future of our transportation infrastructure, you would think we'd want to get ahead of that game. And I hope that there's a great deal of discussion going on about this, because much like Rooftop Solar, who has reached that saturation point, which is why they're changing the rules regarding that, the registered EVs have gotten to a point where you're going to have to replace that funding source, because they drive on roads, too. And I do appreciate, and I don't want you to think for one second that I don't appreciate all the work that KernCog does and how critical it is, because I do. I do, which is all the more reason that I recognized this funding shortcoming many years ago, and it needs to be dealt with, and government needs to be upfront and transparent with the people buying these vehicles, and everybody that, hey, this creates a problem. It's an inequity, and it's going to have to be solved at some point in time, whether it's when we have a million registered EVs or 1.2. I don't know when we finally hit the tipping point, but typically, we will be behind the eight ball.
The program is called the California Road Charge Program, and they have been working on it for a number of years, but that's the name of the program. If you'd like more information on that, I could look into it, too.
All right. The fact that they've been working on it for a number of years, I guess that's good, except for the fact that it's not in the mainstream, and they haven't done anything about it, but I'm glad they're talking about it. Any other questions, gentlemen?
I have a couple.
Yes, sir.
A lot of it is, it's more informational for us here on the council and the people out in the public, and what you've been discussing, what you've been touched on and everything. They're exploring the state of California as a mileage tax, to talk about your discuss. Everybody drives, and you go to DMV to pay your license, you have to turn your odometer in, and how many miles you've driven that year, and you get taxed on the mileage that you drive, and compensate for that. Second question I have is, I know there's been a little talk about the governor, and give everybody $400 that has a registered vehicle, or maybe not registered vehicle. Now, if that passes, would that impact the road tax, the $400 per vehicle?
I don't, I'm not sure exactly what the impact will be. I believe they were taking that from the sales tax portion.
Actually, what originally the intent was to give a credit to people who buy fuel, in recognition of the fact that they're paying a higher price.
Right.
But that's not the way things work in Sacramento. So, what they decided was, now we're going to ignore that, and some point in time, we're just going to send everybody a check. Everybody. A check for $400. That'll solve the problem. So, I believe that is the current proposal on the table.
That's coming from, I assume, the general fund, not the sales tax part of the portion on the fuel?
I could look into it.
Okay. And the other question, it's more, I already have the answer already, pretty much, but is that a lot of the money that's coming out of our fuel tax and stuff, a portion of it, that stuff is going to the high-speed rail, going to that to help fund that. So, that takes away from our roads and stuff and our infrastructure.
Sorry, what was the question?
Our, a lot of our road tax that we pay in our fuel pump is going to the California Resource Board, but it's going to pay for the high-speed rail?
A portion of it, I believe, yeah. I'm not sure on what percentage.
Yeah. You come to a city here, it's very conservative, but we have common sense in our town. We know what's happening. We know what's, you know, but a lot of it's educational to our citizens here, and let the people on the outside of our city know what we're thinking and stuff, and hopefully, you know, they see what we're doing and ask questions, and too, because nothing's free. The governor can't give, don't give anything, because somebody's got to pay for it. You know, even the federal part will pay the state for certain funding and stuff, but somebody pays for it, which is here in California, or the citizens here in TAF, or Arkansas, or any other state. They're funding California. They're taking a big, huge tax bite from the federal side. But like I say, this is a great city. I'm very proud of our city, and we like to ask questions and stuff. A lot of it's for educational, and some of it is just to let other people know what has truly happened, that they don't hear the real story, because nothing's free. It costs somebody something. Thank you.
Any other questions, gentlemen?
None from me, Mr. Mayor.
We will, I would guess, go through, like you said, we'll go through and take a look at these things. Obviously, City Manager Jones and Mark Staples, I mean, they live and breathe this stuff, and so we will talk to them and take that under advisement, and look forward to getting back with you, but we really appreciate you coming before the council. Any additional statement?
Just one comment, if I could, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
It's good to see that 119 is still on the project list. We've been pulling it for the four lanes for 20 years, so.
At least.
Oh, it's still on the list?
It's on the list.
It's actually on there. I was surprised, too.
Well, it might well get completed before high-speed rail, then.
It'll for sure get completed before high-speed rail.
All right. Very good, then.
Mr. Mayor, I do have something.
Oh, yes, sir. I believe we have one more.
So, I noticed on your list, you have bike boulevards, and bike lanes, and bike routes, but you also have two in there for bike paths, and it looks like you're going to extend it from Lake Webb out to Garner Field. Is that true?
This is a planning document. Yes, they would like to. Currently looking for the right of way.
Right now, we're at 36 miles. Isn't that a state record right now?
As far as the length of the bike path?
I believe the connection of the bike path, when it was connected to the lake, did set some kind of record for longest bike path.
That'll be awesome.
All right. Wonderful. I see a lot of people on it. Pretty neat to think about it.
Yes, some of the projects are funded, and some of them are still looking for funds, so.
Okay. ID has got to start somewhere, doesn't it? Thank you very much, sir. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up, item number two, citizen requests public comments. I don't think we have any this evening.
No.
Madam Clerk, we have no citizen requests public comments. Okay. Well, I cut down on the reading, didn't I? Item number three, council statements non-action. Councilman Evland, I'll begin with you this evening, sir.
No statements, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Councilman Whiting.
No statement, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Crier.
Thank you, Mayor. It's a small statement.
Okay.
I wish everybody had a happy Easter, a blessed Easter, and in this time, in this world, where things are happening all over, wars and more wars, and rumors of wars, that we all pray for peace, and for fellow men to, through our suffering and stuff, that they can persevere through the times that we're having, and we're very fortunate in our own country. Yes, there's issues here, but not where it's going to hurt us here, but just pray that we have peace in our own town, and peace in America, and peace in the world. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, sir. I think we would all agree with that. I enjoyed Easter. Easter was beautiful here. The weather for Easter couldn't have been better. I want to thank the Chamber of Commerce. I'm sure they were responsible. So, Dr. Orne's not here this evening, so I want to thank her for that. And it was. It was a great day to be with family and friends, and it was a great day to be in the state of TAF. So, that is all we have this evening. One last thing. For those of you behind the camera, like Mayor Protem was telling Representative KernCog, our intent, when we get involved in these discussions, is to bring the discussion before you. This is your government. This is your community. Oftentimes, these discussions don't take place in front of the camera, so that is the intent of having the discussion, so that it breeds discussion throughout the populace. So, thank you all for being patient. All right. Next up, Planning Commission reports. I believe we have a planning commissioner this evening.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council.
Good evening.
Most of the agenda for this last meeting was informational items. We had a presentation from the TAF Community Gardens Board President, and Jennifer Bryan, and Orion Wade. I think they're both relatively new to the board, talking about reinvigorating the gardens board. I believe they identified the opportunity for a few more people to rent, pardon me, rent opportunities to do some gardening there, plus the indication is that they're going to try and increase the number of community participation events that they're trying to do there, looking to do some more things, I think, with schools as well, in order to increase the participation throughout the community. We had a presentation from our planning director on the city's, the city has an annexation, a committee, doesn't meet very often, but it's time to take a look at what might be happening with annexation in the near future, and also an update on growth in the state of TAF in terms of numbers, and how that might affect the annexation. And then finally, a brief update from Mark on the third meeting of our, with our consultants regarding the downtown community plan update. Can people still make comments? So, you can go to the city's webpage, people who are still interested, and click on the links for the planning process, and still be involved in making comments on the most recent, I think it's our third get-together, to discuss items that they were looking for input from the community. We had a good meeting, good turnout, but you still have an opportunity to comment if you'd like to go on to the city's webpage. It'll take you a link to a dedicated page put up by our consultants. There'll be a little bit of a lull between now and the next meeting, because they're now heading into the hard work phase, which is things like environmental and others in the planning process, which those of you who've been around it a little while know that extends the time in dealing with the planning process considerably. So, I guess we're not really expecting anything until July, maybe August. Who knows exactly how that's going to work out. And that is the bulk of the information that we have for this month.
All right. Thank you very much for the information. Anybody have any questions? Anybody have any questions? No? All right, thanks, sir. Appreciate the update. Next up, item number five, department reports. Any department reports? None? All right. City manager's statements, city manager gentleman.
No statements, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, sir. City attorney's statements.
Thank you, no statements, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Any future agenda requests this evening, gentlemen? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the consent calendar, items nine through 16. All items listed on the consent calendar shall be considered routine and will be enacted by a one-roll call vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the city council requests specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Any item removed from the consent calendar will be considered after the regular business items. Are there any items on the consent calendar that any member of the public would wish to comment on? None? Okay. The consent calendar items are, item number nine, the minutes for the April 5, 2022 regularly scheduled meeting, the payment of bills, some $242,000 worth. Item number 11 is a street closure for the 2022 Chamber of Commerce Car Show. Recommendation is a motion to adopt a resolution entitled, "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Taft, Authorizing the Street Closures for the 2021 Chamber of Commerce Car Show." I'm guessing that's actually the 2022 Chamber of Commerce Car Show. I misread that, I apologize. Item number 12, accept the lowest responsive and responsible bid and award the SB 1, the 10th Street, SB 1, 10th Street Pedestrian Improvements and TDA Article III, South 4th Street Pedestrian Improvements, Phase 1 Project. Recommendation is a motion to accept the lowest responsive and responsible bid, award the project, and to approve a construction agreement with R.C. Becker &amp; Son Incorporated for SB 1, 10th Street Pedestrian Improvements and TDA Article III, South 4th Street Pedestrian Improvements, Phase 1 Project, and to authorize the mayor to execute said agreement. Item 13 would be the restoration of deleted public works maintenance positions. Recommendation is one, approve the addition of one maintenance lead person and one equipment operator slash maintenance worker. And item two is adopt a resolution entitled, "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Taft, Amending the Position Classification Plan and Establishing Corresponding Compensation Rates." Item 14 would be to award three safe and sane fireworks stands for the 4th of July, 2022. Recommendation is a motion to award three safe and sane fireworks stands for July 4, 2022, to the Taft Motorcycle Club, the Taft Sportsman's Club, and the West Side Recreation and Parks District. Item number 15, fiscal year 2021, 2022, FTA Section 5311 application. Recommendation is a motion to adopt a resolution entitled, "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Taft, Authorizing the Federal Funding Under FTA Section 5311, 49 U.S.C. Section 5311," with California Department of Transportation. And then finally, item 16 is the fiscal year 2022, 2023, FTA Section 5311 application. Recommendation there is a motion to adopt a resolution entitled, "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Taft, Authorizing the Federal Funding Under FTA Section 5311, 49 U.S.C. Section 5311," with the California Department of Transportation. I'm going to make sure I don't miss something. Nope, my golly, that's all. All right, does any council member wish to remove any of these items from the consent calendar? Hearing none, at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve consent calendar items nine through 16.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Protem Cryer.
Yes.
Councilmember Evland.
Yes.
Councilmember Whiting.
Yes.
And Mayor Nor.
Yes. That passed on a faux vote with one council member not being here. And that brings the end of this evening's fun to a close. At this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is closed. I want to thank you all for being a part of this evening's presentation.